It's a $2.2 million. So yeah. We got 20,000. 40,000. We got it. So it's all similar. And those. And 300,000. Yeah. We actually. We're like 400,000. You have the hand. If you're a part two. Wouldn't start or something. I'd like to. 25,000. Yeah. Okay. I think it's a break. Well, if you just want that. That is. Just you know, creating.
So yes.
Then I could probably. Yeah. It's a special. We have to look at. I have to. I like so.
Okay, it's 5:30. 5:31, actually. First item is call to order. Second item is the approval of the minutes from the December 14th, 2021 meeting.
Move to approve as printed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Passed. All right. Next item is the election for the chair and vice chair for the planning and zoning commission. Um, I asked how we handle this. It's just a matter of um nomination and a second to that for each one of those positions and we'll vote on it.
I'll nominate Joe to be continued to be our chairman.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to elect me as the chair. Are there any other um inputs or nominees? Seeing none. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed, I guess. Um, for vice chair, just like last time, I'd like to nominate Eric.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to uh elect Eric Dodd as the vice chair for the commission. All those in favor say aye.
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 Same sign. Motion passed. Thanks, guys. Item number four, this is a public hearing. A twenty-two dash one planned unit development amendment to permit a conversion of a townhome unit to a resident from residential use to a daycare use to allow for expansion of a daycare facility at 2367th Avenue East, Lot Three, Block One of Meadowridge Fifteenth Edition, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, Perry Center.
Sorry about that. I thought I had the agenda packet open. All right. So this application was received in order to expand an existing daycare program by converting an adjacent condominium unit from a residential use to a daycare use within a planned unit development. This property was platted and rezoned from light commercial to PUD in 1995 for three, four unit condominiums. Only one condominium structure was built at this site. In two thousand, April of 2005, a planned unit development was approved for the remaining two lots to the north for a group home and a credit services office. A minor modification was approved in March of 2013 for Unit Three to allow for a group childcare facility. In 2014, an amendment to the PUD was approved to allow a change in the development allowing for conversion of one of the residential units to office space for the Perry Center and expansion of the daycare facility to allow additional children and a helper. The office use in recent years has since been converted back to residential use. The applicant is the administrator for the Perry Center to the north, which owns three of the four condominium lots. Unit Two is currently owned privately and they've given verbal agreement to the Perry Center that they would have the first opportunity to purchase when they agree to sell. The daycare expansion was presented to the owners who have no concerns. The applicant does not intend to expand the footprint of the property in any way. However, will relocate the fenced area and the playground to the east portion of the lot to allow for additional paved parking. If the applicant were to convert Unit Two in the future, another amendment would need to be submitted or possibly consider rezoning the property to commercial. Property owners within 150 feet and applicable agencies and departments were notified and a call was received in support of the project. It is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that it is consistent with city plans and ordinances with recommended conditions of approval as follows. Development will be subject to but not limited to the redevelopment corridor overlay district, supplementary district regulations, off-street parking and loading requirements, and sign regulations. And number two, a signed PUD agreement is received if necessary. This is a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions as is the applicant.
Thank you. As far as signed PUD even received if necessary, isn't it necessary for sure? Or why is there a question there?
Um, sometimes we we require one, sometimes we don't. Um, we've reviewed this over the years and and if there's some conditions that need to be addressed. Otherwise, the conditions, um, as long as they meet the parking requirements and the ordinance requirements, it it may not be an issue. And when they apply for a building permit, they're going to need to meet the parking regulations. They're going to need to meet um sign regulations if they apply for a sign um at the supplementary district regulations in terms of parking and fencing. So it remains to be seen if if that's a necessity.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. All right. So this is a public hearing. So with that, I'd uh open it up to any comment or questions from the public on this topic. Anybody? Okay. Seeing none, close that section, commissioners.
I would move to approve with the conditions stated by staff.
I'd second that. Dods?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the application as presented with the two conditions. Are there any other questions or discussion required before we go to vote?
I have one just quick question out of curiosity. Where are people parking now and how do they get into this building? Is it from the sort of northwest, I'm assuming?
There's parking available right here and here. Um, I believe the entrance to the unit is on the north side of the the building. There's a driveway from Seventh Avenue, which accesses the property. Um, then there's parking available here. Um, the playground area is where they plan to put additional parking. And then they'll move the playground over to this location.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments before we go to vote? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Item number five, planning and zoning commissioner training, Mr. John Shockley. Hi, John.
Hello. Uh, thank you. How do we put this in view again? It's been a while.
Oh, if I turn my thing on here, is it gonna show up here too?
Is it working?
That's a technical.
Perfect. Right. Uh, thank you. Uh, the staff had asked that uh every year, every couple of years, we try to do a training with different committees and boards to provide some background, uh, just as board members, how how your committee works or what are some of the issues that may present, be presented to your committee? And uh, over time, we we kind of thought about, uh, at least I have, that every quarter or couple of quarters, it uh present on a different topic. And tonight, I thought I'd start with just some of the basics of planning and zoning law. And then how does the uh planning and zoning commission function? And just briefly, start with, uh, I'm, I serve as city attorney for the City of West Fargo. What do I do? Uh, so I provide legal representation and legal advice to the city. I assist the city commission, planning and zoning commission, and city officials in making decisions. Uh, the one thing that is important to remember is that I'm neither for nor against a topic. Uh, some people kind of think that sometimes I'm taking a side or I'm not taking a side. Uh, the reason that I might interject is I see a legal issue there. And ultimately, at the end of the day, it's really important, as we'll we'll talk about, the process from a legal standpoint. The courts give political subdivisions in North Dakota great deference, but that deference has a limitation in that if you don't follow the procedure, uh, they'll send it back to the city. Um, I offer guidance regarding process and procedures set forth in the city ordinances and North Dakota law. Um, my background in planning and zoning is actually fairly extensive. I started out my practice litigating zoning cases. I zone it, uh, litigated on both the city side and the landowner's side. So I've seen it from both perspectives, both from a developer perspective. I litigated zoning cases on behalf of uh organ, trade organizations that were really focused on principles. Uh, so they had a vested interest in setting state precedent or federal precedent. Uh, and then also from the city's perspective and enforcing zoning ordinances. And so, once again, I I don't really have an opinion whether you should or shouldn't do it. Uh, I provide legal guidance. There's been cases that I've litigated that I didn't feel that was appropriate, but we still won. And there was cases that I felt that it was appropriate and we didn't win. Uh, I also draft ordinances and the other legal documents for planning and zoning. So what are we talking about when we say land use ordinances? Title Four of the city code deals with planning and zoning. And planning and zoning are really two different items. Planning deals with the subdivision of land. Uh, so when we talk about approval of a plat, that's when we're talking about planning, laying out roads, laying out the configuration of lots, uh, and uh circular, uh, you know, traffic circles. Those issues are all part of the planning process and all part of planning. Uh, zoning is the creation of zoning ordinances that regulate the use of land. Uh, not all states in the United States use zoning law. Most do. There's only a handful that do not. And they usually, instead of using zoning ordinances, uh, they zone by covenant. So developments will have covenants within the development, limiting it. And you'll actually see in some communities where they'll have a beautiful housing development, immediately adjacent to it is an industrial use, because they can't control what's next to their land use. So creation or amendment uh of a zoning ordinance, uh, just in brief, that requires a recommendation by planning and by the planning and zoning commission. Uh, so oftentimes, the ordinance will be generated by the planning and zoning commission. Say you want to add uh the use of churches to as a conditional use in a residential zone that would normally originate with the planning and zoning commission. Notice gets published in the city's official newspaper. You have multiple notices. Different political subdivisions have different notice requirements. And feel free to stop me at any time if you have questions. For zoning ordinances to become effective in the city of West Fargo, you need a majority vote by the city commission. Uh, most ordinances receive more than a majority vote by the city commission, but once in a while, there is a three to two vote. Uh, we're also required to publish notice and passage. The reason that we have to publicly publish notice that the ordinance has been enacted is that gives notice to property owners, gives notice to the public that the ordinance is in place. It gives them appeal rights to challenge the ordinance, which we'll talk about in a little bit. And it also puts the general public on notice that there's an ordinance in place. It's a basic part of due process under the law. Ordinances in North Dakota are given the greatest deference by the courts. So when a city passes an ordinance, the courts are higher, highly deferential to uh cities. And what do I mean by that? Highly deferential means that unless it violates state law, the state constitution, the federal constitution, or one of those red flag items like uh one of the amendments in the constitution, typically, uh, the courts will uphold it. Um, one of the cases I litigated, uh, many years ago now, uh, the county had passed zoning ordinances regulating certain types of farm usages. Uh, we challenged that on the basis that it violated state law. Uh, in state law, there is a provision that local sub, political subdivisions are creatures of the state and are therefore limited by everything the state legislature puts in state statute. There is an exception carved out for home rule cities, which, and home rule counties, which the city of West Fargo is. Uh, however, our Supreme Court has started to claw that back a little bit, specifically arising out of some non-zoning cases. But in general, if, as long as the zoning ordinance doesn't violate state law or the constitution, the courts are gonna uphold it. Um, there's an interesting nuance, and when we get into challenging what your decisions are, when it comes to an ordinance, really, the only way that somebody can challenge an ordinance in North Dakota is through what's called a declaratory judgment action. And that's basically, it's not really a trial. It's uh, you challenge the basis of the ordinance and it's a legal action. And it says the ordinance is invalid because it violates this principle of law. It's a very high burden to get around, and the courts are very skeptical of it because they feel they want to give extreme deference to the legislative branch, whether that be at the state level or the local level. And so sometimes you'll hear, uh, at the city commission level, say, oh, it's a policy decision for the city. It truly is. Um, you can decide one policy or another policy. They're both legal. And the courts give a lot of deference to that, uh, unless you're not properly doing the notifications, publications, those sorts of issues in which the court will quickly invalidate it or if it violates state law. Uh, the, as I indicated, for land use, uh, the court's review of a decision of a local governing body is very, very limited.
Just one quick question on the, going back on the notification. It's still just newspapers?
Yeah.
Okay. So I mean, that seems to be almost contrary to. There is a proper notification here. Newspapers, I don't think. Why they circulate it more? Is there a consideration being given to changing the definition of what's communicated?
There has been. Uh, there's been some bills that have been discussed at the legislature, but they haven't advanced that bill yet. I know at the city, we published, uh, the new ordinances on the city website. Uh, there's actually an AG opinion that our office had requested, because some newspapers were going totally to online publication. Uh, and the AG's office said, under existing law, that didn't qualify as publication. You actually had to have physical publication in a newspaper of circulation. And so that's the way the statute is now. Uh, hopefully, the next session of legislature, they take that into consideration. Because I agree with you, the current newspapers, not everybody reads them. Nobody really reads the legal notices, but they're, they're full of ordinance changes and amendments uh, and were required by law to publish it. And we'd actually talked about proposing to the legislature that we could substitute, like having some statewide internet site that people could go to or a city's website that you could publish on, but that's currently not the law. The city can go above and beyond the basic legal requirements of publishing in a newspaper, but you're not required to. And so, uh, with respect to the ultimate, what we call standard review, that's where a judge will review, what did the city do when it passed the ordinance? Uh, it's very deferential. It's basically, as long as you didn't act arbitrarily, capriciously, or unreasonable, which means, in essence, that your decision in passing the ordinance was rational. Uh, rational basis in our court system is the lowest level of scrutiny given to a government action. Uh, I like to think of it as a very low bar, that you should be able to step over. You don't need to jump over it. You just need to step over it. There's, as we get into what you actually do as a planning and zoning commission, when we start to review interpretations of zoning ordinances, that's where the court starts to scrutinize more what your decisions are. And the reason the courts do that is that you're acting as a quasi judicial entity rather than purely legislative. Remember, purely legislative, the courts want to give you extreme deference. Whereas when you're interpreting an ordinance, ordinance is already in place and you're determining somebody's rights under the ordinance. And so it's very much, you're taking an enforcement action. You're letting them undertake the business they're requesting. You're not undertake, letting them undertake their business. And so that's why the scrutiny gets to be a higher level. The courts want to make sure that you're properly interpreting the ordinance and that you're properly applying it. At the end of the day, if, I'll use an example, you don't think that a church should be a conditional use in a residential zone, the time to change it is not when somebody's applying for a conditional use before you. The time to change it is when there's nothing pending, you change the ordinance and you delete churches as a conditional use permit. So I'm just briefly gonna touch upon some of the items that you've dealt with, uh, and feel free to ask questions. So variance. Uh, variances are created by zoning law. Uh, they're a creation of case law that came over time and of different political subdivisions around the country where you enact an ordinance. And people have real true hardships in building upon their property because of the ordinance. It might say that you need, you know, thirty-five percent lot, no more than thirty-five percent lot coverage and the lot is a certain type of a shape where thirty-five percent lot coverage in a building, it's just not gonna work. And so it requires the applicant to come to the uh planning and zoning commission and then ultimately to the city commission to prove that it would be an extraordinary hardship uh, if you strictly interpreted the ordinance. And so what a variance is, is basically exception based upon the facts and circumstances. And it's really important when somebody's presenting to you, requesting a variance, that you listen to just the facts and circumstances of that application. You can't go outside the application. You can't say, well, Billy down the street, he had a variance, or Nancy had a variance two blocks away. You really should look at the facts and circumstances that are presented to you. Now, if somebody, if a staff report comes in and says the neighboring property got a variance, that's something that's in the record. The things that are outside the record, you really shouldn't consider. Um, or if there's testimony regarding what's in the record. Uh, on the, and I'll get into that in briefly, what, what we think about on the developers or landowner's side.
Is, um, sorry.
No, go ahead.
The concept of precedence that, you know, is that taken into account? And that kind of leads to the whole, Billy down the road had a variance in similar circumstance. So even in that circumstance, you don't, that's not something that we should.
Well, the, so precedent in the legal aspect, no, would not be legal precedent because that is, they're, by their very nature, variances are exceptions to the rules. Uh, so a court would say that's not really relevant, whether or not that happened. Now, from a political policy perspective, that might become relevant precedent. And that might go into your consideration as you make that decision, but it's not legally binding on you. So you could just say, well, you know, that was then, that was a different planning and zoning commission. That was a different city commission. We're gonna apply the ordinance how it's supposed to be applied. And I've actually had that happen on several cases where cities had been granting variances and they were using it because nobody wanted to follow the ordinances. And so I happened to represent the landowner that was the final person before the city decided, we're not gonna grant variances anymore. And the court really didn't take into account what the prior actions were. The court said, well, you, a variance stands or fails on its own merits, so. And, and feel free to ask any questions at any time. Um, it's actually, I find these presentations are actually better if it's more interactive. Um, so, uh, just briefly, special conditions exist that are unique to the property and are applicable to generally to other property in the same district. Literal interpretation of the ordinance would deprive the applicants of rights enjoyed by other properties. That's the classic odd shaped property. I can't build on it unless you give me a variance. Special conditions do not result from the actions of the applicant. They can't go and do something to their property and then claim they need a variance. It, it just, it's sort of this concept of coming to the board with clean hands. Like you just purposely can't sell off half of your property and then say, well, I can't build on my property because it's too small. That, you know, those are self-imposed actions by the applicant when they knew the zoning law existed. It doesn't confer a special privilege on the applicant, denied to others, uh, land structures or buildings in the district. So you couldn't, you're not supposed to grant them. If it's a residential area, you shouldn't be granting a variance to build a, a church if there's, if they're not permitted uses or something like that. It really should be for a use that's allowed in the district, but because of this unique circumstances of the lot, they can't build upon it.
The question I have also is, you use the word district. Is that, that's just an area, town overall? How do you define district when you're?
A great question. So a district is the zoning district that's around it. And so you, just the zoning district that's around where you're granting the variance. So you really shouldn't consider, like, what's in another district. If the planning is done properly, you should have a nicely ordered uh layout of your zoning and you shouldn't have to look to what's in other districts to grant a variance. Because a variance is truly a hardship that's in a property. And it should be to, because I can't build a house on the property because it's odd shaped lot. That's what a variance is supposed to be for. Once again, with a variance, and you're gonna hear this a lot, uh, the court's standard review is arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. Very deferential to your decision. But when you start getting into variances, uh, we really need to look at the facts of the case and did you properly apply the ordinance? Is increasingly what we're seeing is that when you make a decision as a planning and zoning commission and then a city, you can have neighboring properties that join in and appeal to contest the decision. And so even though it might be the right decision from a variance standpoint, somebody might try to appeal it. So that's why we want to follow the proper procedure. We want to look at what the facts in the case are and make a good decision based upon those facts. Because you don't want to get it into court, cost the city money, and then on top of it, it gets turned around and you gotta rehear it, so. And you'll hear, hear that theme a lot, so. Uh, so conditional use permits, a little more common than variances. Uh, conditional use permit, in its very essence, I like to use the church as an example because it's a very good use in a residential area to compare. So a conditional use permit is for a use that would be consistent with the surrounding area, a residential area with a church. And the reason it would be consistent is churches really only get used heavily once or twice a week uh, and at limited times. And you can usually control that use through special conditions that are put on the property. So for a church, you could uh require that they have a certain amount of parking, certain hours of operation, certain issues like that. And so that's why a conditional use permit uh works very well. Once an use is listed in your ordinance as a conditional use permit, you have to grant it if they meet all the conditions set out in the ordinance. This goes right back to my original comment, that if you don't want it in the ordinance, don't wait till you're reviewing a conditional use permit to say, wait a minute, we don't, we don't want a church in a residential area. We don't want a hog farm here. Change the ordinance, because once it gets to the conditional use permit hearing, you, if the applicant meets all of the conditions set forth in your ordinance, and having been on the landowner's side, we go through, we check all the boxes, uh, every item on the zoning, we present, we tried to build a record. If you don't grant it, the judge is either gonna turn or overturn your decision and say, uh, conditional use permit granted, or send it back to the political subdivision uh, with instructions to rehear it and to decide in accordance with the judge's order. And so it, conditional use permits uh are very popular also because they allow you to add additional conditions to a use that might be consistent with the area, but you need extra conditions on it, so. And uh, what we have recently, just a little bit of background, uh, within the last about seven years, we've started creating written conditional use permits that are recorded on the property so that once the property is sold, somebody buys it, they can look up the conditional use permit that's recorded on the property. A conditional use permit goes by its very terms. And so what the terms in the conditional use permit are, they go on with the property. irregardless of who the property owner is. There are some limited ti, limited examples where you can limit the duration of a conditional use permit, but it's generally not like an acceptable, from a purely zoning standpoint, it's not typically acceptable to limit the time on a conditional use permit or to limit it to certain owners. Conditional use permits, if, the other nice part is, if the applicant is violating the conditions of the permit. So for example, if the conditional use permit says, "No stockpiling of sand or gravel," and we write that into the permit, our conditional use permits allow the City Commission to hold a hearing in front of the City Commission to determine why they're violating the terms of the conditional use permit. If it's found by the City Commission they are violating the terms, the City Commission can pull the conditional use permit and then they're non-compliance, and then the city can take legal action to abate, bait it, shut it down, whatever type of business it is. And we've actually had a couple instances of that in West Fargo where we've shut down businesses that don't have conditional use permits because they violated their terms of their conditional use permit. That's one of the first cases I litigated for the city many, many years ago.
Quick question on that, John. How is that enforced? Is it somebody tattletales on the business or is there active enforcement by the city to review those conditions and see if there's compliance or?
So enforcement is, it's a great question. Enforcement can come in a number of ways. You can have a neighbor report it and then it makes it to Planning and Zoning staff. The city can take action and identify properties that are in violation, or the City Commission can identify properties that are in violation. I think our practice in West Fargo for the last fifteen years has been really more complaint-driven. But over time, I think as, as cities grow, they tend to move more towards having active code enforcement. And the, the reason for that is, as communities mature, people have certain expectations that they can use their property in a certain way, and then they end up with the neighbor that's doing X on their property. They don't like that, it drives down property values, and so a lot of larger cities in the metro area have their own code enforcement, and that generates the complaint. Great question. And then what would typically happen is, staff would get the complaint, they would ask me if we think that it's a violation, what the next steps are. If it is a violation of the conditional use permit, we have to send notice to the holder of the conditional use permit that they're in violation. We typically give them thirty, twenty, sixty days to correct it, whatever, depending upon the, how, the seriousness of the violation. If it, obviously if it's a health and safety matter, it's a shorter duration. If it's more of a nuisance, we might give them thirty days. If it's something that's enormous and hard to remedy, we might have a kind of a split where we request they have a plan upfront and then a longer term to abate it. And if they don't take any action, then we hold the hearing in front of the City Commission and then we take legal action and get a judge's order to shut it down. And so once again, why the procedure is so important is that when we take that enforcement action, the attorney for the landowner will often try to identify any procedural defects in the process and point that out in an enforcement action and say, "It's not valid for A, B and C." And so as the city attorney, I have to say, "No, we followed A, B and C, Judge, we can go ahead and enforce it." Those types of actions, once again, arbitrary, capricious and unreasonable. And so as long as, with conditional use permits, we're taking into account all the facts and following the ordinance, the judge will affirm the decision. But keep in mind that if you have an applicant that meets all of the conditions of your conditional use permit and you deny it, the judge is likely to say, "I'm going to grant it" because they met all the conditions in the conditional use ordinance. So where the appeals of decisions, so as, as you've seen, any appeals from this board are taken in front of the Board of Adjustment, and that Board of Adjustment may reverse, affirm or modify the decision. And so ultimately, your decisions can be appealed, and then if somebody's not satisfied with the Board of Appeals, they can seek review with the City Commission. One of the unusual things about West Fargo's ordinances is the Board of Appeal, or Board of Adjustment is also the City Commission, so it's essentially another appeal to the City Commission. And we've actually had a couple of those historically. And then the City Commission can basically reconsider its decision, or it can change its decision, or it can affirm it. They then have thirty days from the point of that decision to appeal it to a district court. Typically, what I do as city attorney is I'll prepare what are called findings of fact and conclusions, which set forth the factual basis, the law and the reason why the City Commission made its decision. And what that does is that gives the judge explanation of our decision and it helps us to defend our case. What happens before the judge is not like a typical trial that you see on TV. They go based upon the record, and so the city has to assemble the record and the attorneys fight over what's in the record. And so that's oftentimes, while you'll hear me say, "Well, we should really have this in the record," or, I'm very careful in talking to the president of the commission to make sure that we have clear bookends on public hearings so that we get all the information and testimony in and there's clear parameters for the decision. Some of the things to think about, based upon my experience as commissioners, when you're sitting before a conditional use permit or a variance, it's important, if you do have a conflict of interest, to disclose that. That's something that opposing attorneys often pick up on, is if somebody owns a business next to the business that they denied the conditional use permit for, that's a red flag. Or if, you, you might feel really, really passionate about a subject. You might, and I'll, I'll use the hog farms as an example because I spent a lot of time litigating on hog farms. Planning and zoning, people feel very, very passionate about whether or not a hog farm should be located in County X. Planning and zoning commissioners can't go out and advocate one way or another where the hog farm should be there because that ends up being a conflict of interest and they have to recuse themselves because it's a quasi judicial action and the judge is going to say, "Well, you're supposed to do your job, you're supposed to determine whether or not they followed the ordinance." It's not a legislative decision where you can say, "I'm for or against the ordinance." Other people can have all the opinions they want, just as commissioners, the best thing to say is, you know, "I'm hearing a conditional use permit, I really can't talk about it." Or you can blame it on me and just say, "The city attorney advised that, you know, if you have any questions, bring up the public hearing and staff, staffer the applicant can answer them." And then same thing applies to the City Commission. Years ago in West Fargo, we had a case in which a city commissioner was advi, there was a conditional use permit, city commissioner was advocating for one side of the conditional use permit, voted on it, went to court, the judge turned it around, remanded it and said that the city commissioner had to recuse themselves from participating in it because it's a quasi judicial decision, just like if somebody had a DUI before a case, they wouldn't want the judge out telling everybody, you know, "I think so-and-so should be convicted or not convicted." It just kind of violates that whole sense of due process. Kind of some of the other important things to remember during the appeal process, if we have to build a record, so if there are texts and stuff that are being sent back and forth from Planning and Zoning Commission members or City Commission members, that can become part of the record. And so discourage any communications by text for matters that are before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And remember, what you put in email can end up in the court proceeding. And so if you don't want it on the news, in the newspaper or in court, don't type it out on the email, text or any other type of document that can live on, so. And the other important thing for when we get into really controversial situations is, I'm there to help you out. And so if you have questions, you can always take a break, you can say, "We're going to adjourn the public hearing for a few minutes, get some guidance from the city attorney." I've, I've been through many, many fights on planning and zoning issues and so I'm more than happy and willing to help you out on it.
Is that something that you say that we should do, right? Or is it just, because I've asked you a lot of questions, it's kind of in the open and it becomes part of the record, so?
So in North Dakota, most everything is subject to open meetings and open records. The only time that we can go into executive session is if there's a pending legal matter. As city attorney, I can declare that it's likely that you need specific legal advice regarding an action that's likely to go to court. The challenge in planning and zoning issues is, I always view every planning and zoning issue as potentially going to court. In today's world, people have more money to litigate and it's fairly straightforward to file a planning and zoning appeal, and it's not particularly costly for them. They can, you know, challenge a decision for twenty, thirty or forty thousand dollars and, you know, some people just do that because they don't like their neighbor. But if, if there's an issue coming up, what I would, I, I would either normally interject or if you want a procedural question, that's probably not something that I could answer in executive session because procedure is just straight procedure. But if it looks like we're going to end up in litigation, I'd probably say something to the effect that I, you know, let's close, you know, finish the public hearing and then table making the decision, and Mr. Chair, we may need to have an executive session to talk about the issue.
Can I ask for clarification back to your point about conflict of interest? And you mentioned an example of a hog farm. Is that a case of you shouldn't have expressed public opinion about zoning issues outside of your own jurisdiction, but when, did I just say that you shouldn't express them? That you can express those public opinions outside of your own jurisdiction, but if, let's say someone wanted a hog farm permit in your jurisdiction, then you need to maintain some kind of neutral position about it? Is that correct? That you should be able to have your public opinions outside of considerations by your own body?
Correct. And, and a, a good example was the hog farm case where several of the Planning and Zoning Commission members were vehemently against hog farm zoning in North Dakota in general, perfectly fine. But as soon as you file an application for a permit in that county, you really shouldn't talk about that application or permit because you're about to hear that. And the applicants in situations like that usually have done all their homework on the Planning and Zoning Commission members so they already knew that. And they would be looking for somebody to kind of stumble and make a decision or make a mistake to bring that up and either challenge. Sometimes as the landowner, you want people to make a mistake so that you can bring it up in litigation. And so you don't tell the political subdivision that they're making a mistake. And you just let it go through and then you challenge it in court and get the judge to reverse it. And then you kind of push the political subdivision into making a decision even though it probably was originally the right decision, but they did it wrong and they get nervous and they just kind of back down. And so that's why I'm always very procedural oriented because I want to make sure that the city doesn't get in the position where they have to make a decision because we made a procedural error and either political pressure is mounting to just decide in the applicant's favor or whatever it might be. And so that's why I always really push the procedural side. And to be frank, my, my experience with judges in North Dakota, that's really what, you know, they're very, very deferential to your decisions as long as you're following the procedure properly and not doing the conflict of interest issues and not undertaking to go way beyond what's presented to you factually. You know, just truly think of it as, this is somebody that's presenting their case to you and their case either stands or falls on the facts that they present to you.
So if you really like ribs and bacon, you should keep that to yourself. I mean, hasn't the legislature taken care of hog farms and basically saying you can't zone a lot in your district?
Right, there's a-
If it's agricultural district, you can't, you can't do that.
Correct. So North Dakota cities are the only jurisdiction that can prohibit hog farms, and that's either within city limits or extraterritorial zones, you can prohibit hog farms. But you're correct, the North Dakota Legislature enacted legislation that it puts a heavy burden on a political subdivision to deny an application for a hog farm or any other KFO activity. And there's similar, there's similar provisions to those types of rules when you deal with First Amendment uses, which are adult entertainment uses. There are specific protections enshrined in the Constitution out of the First Amendment that provide those types of uses have to be allowed somewhere in the city. And so that type of use would generally be allowed, I think it's in our industrial zone? Yeah. So somebody could build an industrial or adult use in the industrial zone, and that's because the United States Supreme Court has said that you can't prohibit that type of use because that's considered part of free exercise of the First Amendment. And one other item dealing with churches, there are certain protections under federal law that are due to churches. The Supreme Court somewhat stripped away some of the rules regarding that and then Congress re-imposed some of them. So there are certain, when we get back to talking about state and federal constitutional issues, sometimes there are constitutional issues that surround zoning, zoning issues, but I will always try to alert you to those types of issues. And I'll open it up for any questions that you might have, tried to keep it short.
Thanks. Yeah, I've got a question as far as what I've been reading here about zoning. And in some states, there are lawsuits, I think, in which that cities are allowed then to restrict dense building in, you know, some panels. How does it fit with, what you just talked about as far as constitutionality, you know, latitude or that one's?
So great question. Different, it really depends upon what's enshrined in your state law. In North Dakota, a lawsuit like that probably wouldn't have legs in the state courts because our law just gives so much deference to your ability to create zoning ordinances. In other states, there are more rules that are imposed upon jurisdictions' ability to zone. Some of those lawsuits, the basis of it is that more dense use, by not allowing more dense use, you're violating equal protection issues because typically more dense use, you see different social economic groups using the more dense development. And the theory goes that you're violating the provisions of equal protection of the state constitution or the federal constitution. I don't, from a federal perspective, I don't think that goes anywhere because the Supreme Court has a couple cases that really set forth a test for regulatory, what we call regulatory takings under zoning law. But some states have broader protections under the state constitution for equal protection and you might actually be able to have a successful claim. We really haven't seen that in North Dakota. And, you know, kind of some other interesting issues for me from a zoning perspective is that in some of the eastern states, you see where they're actually going beyond just land use zoning and they're actually starting to regulate like the active use of property. I'll use an example, there are some townships that are regulating how much fertilizer farmers can apply to their land on the basis that that's a zoning. And I don't think that would survive in North Dakota, but you are seeing that through some of the townships. And so it's, it's kind of interesting to see the, how, how the zoning law is growing and changing across the country, but long answer to, to your question.
There's been a couple of trials, regular areas from, so in respect, we both-
John, it's good information you gave us and that's, obviously we want to keep that in mind, but as a matter of practice though, isn't it, every decision we make is subject to review by the commission as, at, at, at any rate? So I mean, not that we shouldn't try to make the right decision, which I think we probably do, and consider all the information and follow the proper protocols, but every action item we take on is just more or less a recommendation because the commission has the final say on any action item.
That's correct. I, I would say though that because you're first in the process, if something goes really wrong at planning and zoning where it's a, what I referred to as a crazy hearing, that just adds fodder to the appeal and it makes it more difficult for the governing body to make its decision because then it's- to make its decision because then it's trying to backfill what happened at planning and zoning. And so I kind of think of planning and zoning as the gatekeeper and I make sure that you're doing the due diligence, you're making a good decision so that when it goes to the city commission, they have a pretty narrow what they're going to decide. They're not actually rehearing the case essentially where it's new facts and, you know, all sorts of things. And so, yes, you are right, but I think there's an important job for planning and zoning to do and being the gatekeeper and-
Well, and I, I think we all take it serious and we all understand that, but in the reality, as far as whatever decision we make, ultimately it's going to be the commission's decision that's going to be the one that's most apt to be challenged if there is going to be a challenge.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a good point. So, when you appeal, you appeal the decision of the governing body. However, when you appeal, if, and I'll use my hog, my hog farm experience, if you have a really bad hearing before planning and zoning where people show up and make absurd, sometimes inappropriate comments based upon workers that may or may not work at facilities, that gets into the record. And then that, look, the judge starts to look at like, what is going on with that political subdivision, you know, why were they allowing things like that to happen before planning and zoning? So, you are correct in that all the decisions will ultimately go to the city commission, but it can, from defending the decision of the city, it can be very, it can cause problems down the road if we have, if we don't run a good clean process at planning and zoning. And I've seen that happen before.
Well, and I, when I was on the commission, I really appreciated, I don't know if you guys thought that, but I really appreciated planning and zoning, I'll call vetting because they, they get a lot more public comment and public feedback. And I, it's very important because otherwise, you know, obviously you spend a lot of time at the commission level having to, to go through that information. So, I think it's very important. I think everyone takes their role very serious here and we, we all try to, you know, obviously do what we think is right in the, the ordinances and so on. I'm just saying though, as far as the actual process, so we're not making a final decision, here it goes up to the commission who has the ultimate, and they have a lot more latitude at the commission level to, to make decisions they feel, I guess, you know, in determining which way they go. Granted, they've got the ordinance and all that, they have to follow, they have to follow the law. They can't just, yeah, just disregard that one and do it. Well, they could, but it wouldn't, wouldn't fare very well. But one, one other question just came to mind is these variances and conditional use permits and all that. Over the years, I always heard people complain about the notification process. And I understand we follow state law and we always fell back on, well, we have, we had to notify people then fifty feet or a hundred and fifty feet or whatever. Depending on the circumstances, that can sometime be very inadequate for, say, a neighborhood. Say, I recall in a couple of years ago, I had someone opening a gun shop in their house. Yeah, have houses built around them. I mean, he was, guy was kind of in a new development by his own and it wasn't real controversial, but there were a few people that, from the area that had, had remarks regarding that. And I'm just wondering if there's been any consideration either at the local or state level to look at what that notification process truly should be. Because a hundred and fifty feet is not very far, especially if you get a larger lot or, you know, commercial property or whatever it is. So, it's just something I, I think perhaps should be looked at in the future so that we don't have people say, well, I never heard about that and I live three houses down, you know, so.
Yeah, so I think our, what we follow right now is the ordinance, what the notice requirements for the ordinances are. State law is somewhat vague in how far you give notification for property owners for conditional use permits. You could certainly, the city commission or planning and zoning could certainly recommend changing what the minimums of notification requirements are. You can, you know, the ordinance is set out a minimum, you can go way above the minimum. It just sets out a minimum. It's like the notification in the newspaper, that's the minimum. You can do far more than that as a city if that's a policy decision. Use, like special assessments as an example, the law requires notification in the newspaper, but the city adopted a policy where they mail property owners notice, put it on the website, and they also publish it in the newspaper. And I think there's a second follow-up letter too. And that's all above and beyond the minimum requirements of law.
Well, that's something staff would have to consider. And every area is a little different. You know, I, I think we had something down on South Cheyenne Street, there were the lots really large, you know, they got a lot of trees and, you know, there's separation and, yeah, everybody followed the rules by the law, but yet the notification maybe hit two neighbors. And if those neighbors happen to not care or, or whatever, you know, the word doesn't disseminate through a, the area that's probably affected by, by whatever's being proposed. So, just something to consider.
Commissioner Thorstik.
That's actually something that, I, I agree with you on that point. And that's something that I've heard repeatedly from the audience over the years that I've been, you know, on the commission here. And I do know that because of my experience working with the city of Fargo, that it is less in West Fargo than it is even in Fargo. And this is the perfect time to have this conversation, like John said, outside of an actual application. I think this is the perfect time to provide that kind of feedback. I know we had had, Elena and I had had a, a side conversation with Megan a couple of months ago on the same topic and it, it's, you know, on the awareness of staff, on the list of things they're aware of, but probably hasn't made it to the top. I'll let Tim comment on that.
It's, we work at the direction of our policymakers. We have often had a really controversial topic and we have a full room of people that say they didn't hear about it, but they're here. So, that's sometimes the response. That's, you know, that's not intended to be, you know, funny or ironic. It's, the technology's made it now that Facebook and our, our own channels that we use and the neighborhood apps help disseminate that information. One neighborhood that I, I think is most unique is the Nelson Acres neighborhood where when we notify, we, such large lots, we notify like four people, yet the entire neighborhood knows by the end of the day. And I get about five phone calls because they all have my cell phone number. So, you know, those technologies of our modern time help out a lot, but if the commission wants us to, there's nothing that state law or constitution limits us to go above and beyond. So, we will do that. I guess right now I'd take it as we have some comment from planning commission, but if the planning commission wants to make a, a motion to increase our notification, we would do that. The only thing I'd caution that might get some pushback from our city commission is if it's mailing, that becomes a little bit costly and also time consuming. Our staff has to prepare now multiple mailings and if we increase that to a thousand feet or a mile or what have you, it sounds great in theory, but that could be every single application we're all sending, you know, five thousand mailing. So, I think we have to come up with a better solution.
A lot of people coming in saying, why are you sending me a letter every week, right?
Yeah, yeah. And, and we have tremendous costs on mailing for special assessment districts. We had this, this last district on South Cheyenne, just printing off color copies of things. We were talking thousands of dollars and then mailing that out, that's another thousands of dollars. So, that starts to add up and now we're raising fees for applicants and a conditional use permit typically is a resident. And if we tell them, oh, it's five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars versus two hundred dollars, we try to do it as cheap as we can. So, I'd, I'd encourage the planning commission, as you consider that, that to look at other options other than just mailing.
Is it something that we could add to an agenda for a discussion of this and then potentially we might-
Yeah, we can put that on the next agenda if that's all right with Aaron.
Because there's a number of things to discuss about that and so this is probably not the right place to do it. But, and I know we call these non-agenda items, but they're actually on the agenda. So, I think that's kind of a strange term for them, but a non-public hearing item, I guess, is what it would be for we, for us to discuss the issue of notification of affected property owners or something like that.
I would just-
Well, I'd just say, having been on the other side and knowing what it takes to let people know who did not receive a notification, that these are issues that I would hope that we might talk about.
My favorite public hearing comment about notices was somebody was complaining that we sent them notices and they thought they were junk mail, so they threw them away. So, it was, they want more notices, but we sent them notices and they said they threw them away. So, it, we, there's been times we put it on Facebook, we sent them letters on, on the website and people still say they didn't get the notice. So, it, it's a, it's a tough subject getting notices out and-
Well, it's tough and there's a lot of variables. It depends on what, what it's going to be and where it's at. Like you pull, you know, Nelson Acres may be different, but if you had one over in Eagle where the houses are, you know, three feet, three feet apart and you're putting in a daycare and there's no on, off street parking, there are very little parking, stuff like that, maybe you have to let a wi, a longer, a bigger area know about it because it's going to impact a longer street. Whereas out in Nelson Acres, obviously that would be probably a non-factor. So, I don't know if there's any hard fast rules, but I think it's something to discuss because that's what I heard over the years and you're right, people are showing up, but usually it's they're complaining, well, I, I wouldn't have known if Bob didn't tell me. And, you know, they're upset because they're two houses down and they didn't get a letter, but Bob did. But you're never going to satisfy everyone, but I think if we can find the right balance there, I think it would, it would be helpful in the long term.
I'd like to see what's not working because Tim's point that, you know, it's something controversial, this place is full and, you know, we're here until nine o'clock tonight. And so, people get the word out if it's something they're not happy.
There's another side to it, too, I should add. You know, the notification helps to require that super majority by the commission if it needs to pass. So, like if we increase that too much, now, you know, people that have no real impact of what this might be, now can impact the decision-making of the commission by requiring that super majority. So, just if somebody doesn't like something, now we're set to the super majority. So, there's a little level of sort of, yeah, we want to protect our residents, but we also want to protect that resident who wants to do something to some degree. I mean, you have to give somebody a right to develop their property. You can't just take that right away from them because the public doesn't specifically like that. Unless, that's why, you know, the planning commission, again, back to John's point, is so important because you weave through the facts, you remove the biases, you weave through the facts to determine, does this meet the city's intent? That's why we have a plan and then we have the ordinances based on the plan. So, the state, as John was talking about, gives us that authority to zone. Well, they don't give it to us unless we create a plan first. So, we have to have a plan and that's what the zoning applies to. So, that's where we have to be careful and be-
Our notification for rezoning is a hundred and fifty feet. Not very much, but it tends to hit everybody who that property touches. If you get a big property looking at rezoning, everybody who that property touches is in that notification and then requires, if they all protest, it's a super majority. A conditional use permit is three hundred and fifty feet. Because that's more use-based. You're saying, we're all within this district, we all can do this permitted use. A conditional use is outside of that permitted use, so it may affect more people. Three hundred and fifty feet extends that out generally within a block. And most conditional use permits are on, you know, one lot and that one lot may affect a greater area. So, I, there's a reason why somebody came up with these numbers a number of years ago and I've never really challenged that, I've trusted why they came up with that, but we certainly can, can take a closer look at that. I just don't think it's as simple as, it might be a nuanced approach. Maybe we have to notify multiple people, but the, the notification area remains the same or is increased a small amount.
So, can I just clarify, is that something that we can then get on the agenda for a discussion? Because I've held back right now because I do have things to say, having been on the other side. And part of it is related maybe to our even next non-agenda item on the agenda, which is about our, our ability to discuss topics that aren't always just tied to a public hearing and a request. And part of the issue of people being notified and having input about what happens in their neighborhood is whether you have a neighborhood that is functioning and people know each other and there's a, a strength there of people having a common concern. And I'd be very interested to see whether in West Fargo, we want to pursue supporting neighborhoods. And I think there has been some interest on the part of staff to do that. Maybe I'm wrong here, but I wonder if we couldn't also as a commission spend some time outside of our decision-making to discuss some of those ideas so that we really have some strong neighborhoods, they're identified, there's opportunities for them to know things, not just about planning and zoning changes, but what they might like to see in their neighborhoods. Is that a possibility? I know we have the problem of, it's not a problem. Open meetings, as an old journalist, I'm a believer in open meetings, but is there a way for us to have discussions that don't involve taking any action? I'm not talking about executive session, but can we do any kind of informal discussions of topics like that or some others that might be perennial issues that we grapple with here? Well, they don't necessarily lead to a decision. They might just lead to us having some ideas, sharing them with staff. Or maybe they, down the road, lead to some recommendation about some kind of an ordinance change, I don't know.
Well, this is where we start getting into policy questions, but you certainly can add things to the agenda that are relevant to planning and zoning that you could discuss. I don't think, I'll use an example, I don't, probably wouldn't be appropriate to discuss special assessment policy before planning and zoning. But if there's changes that you're looking at for notification, zoning ordinance changes, things like that, you know, that's something that the Planning and Zoning Commission can, can talk about. Same with, it's probably not appropriate to talk about parks and stuff because you have a whole nother political subdivision that handles parks. But if you're talking about the amount of green space that was required, that's a planning and zoning issue.
And I guess I'm not so much talking about something on, on the agenda, but are, is there any way that we can have other kinds of informal, you know, a coffee or something like that? And I don't want to violate an open meeting issue here. So, is there any kind of possibility for anything informal that might not be connected to the, to the meeting and the agenda?
We've done round bays with commissioners and I, I think either having invite both planning commission and commissioners or have specifically planning commission round bays. I don't see a bar that's done that over the years.
Okay, that's- See, right away, we're-
The idea is to have it as convenient as possible and no action taken, but it's a public meeting and we advertise that it's a public meeting.
Okay, that's how you do it. Okay.
No action can be taken, we're very strict about that.
Yes. That, that's exactly the kind of thing I'm thinking of that's informal where we have an opportunity to just discuss topics, but we're not going anywhere with them. And, yeah, over lunch is always good.
Staff has to kind of direct the discussion through a presentation and we just have to be very careful and that's often done by John here. We've done it for sign code, I believe we invited the planning commission to that. I don't think anyone could show up. Yeah, so, but, you know, those are the, the, just the dirt and all that stuff of talking about sign code, it really gets kind of long at a meeting like this. And you have maybe a couple of tough public hearings before that and you don't want to go through that. So, we have lunch and that's all we're talking about, keep it to an hour and very strictly kind of enforced that we're not going to get anybody's doing, any head nodding or direction or things like that. Just avoid that, it became more educational.
You know, the length of notification is probably perfect, some of it to have.
Yeah, yeah.
So, is that something that we, we can sit here or could suggest that we-
Direct staff to-
Or direct staff to?
I'd like to, at least have a review of it. Doesn't mean that, that, you know, will change anything, but it certainly is something that actually should be questioned the previous logic and if there are things that influence that, yeah.
So, I'd maybe ask to direct staff to do that and then give, I earn a little bit of a chance to figure out why they could fit this into their schedule.
We want it right now. You've been on the job for what, three weeks?
No, and I, I was just maybe going to echo some of that. I think for, for today's purposes and as we kind of maybe bleed a little bit into item six here, I think we're interested in hearing what you have to say and- here, I think we're interested in hearing what you have to say, and like the brown bag suggestion, if you have suggestions, you know, throw all those out today, and then maybe next month, we can have a similar item on the agenda, and we can kind of come back to you with some suggestions based on what we've heard.
Doing brown bags with some topics or something, yes.
Yeah, give us a chance to talk internally as well, on what might, you know, work well, just from a logistical standpoint as well. So that'd be my suggestion.
I appreciate that.
I would suggest we have some meeting. Small, breakfast is a theme, or something.
It'd be a city hall.
Yeah, good idea. Thanks, Chad.
Let's have one more question for John, quick.
No.
Sorry, nice work, John, it was very informative, as usual. Question, as the city works to zone properties, if there's a zoning change, does the city end up ever paying for a zoning change?
Great, that's a...
And if this is a rabbit hole, I can defer it till another time.
It's a great question, so there is a zoning, you can have a zoning change that results in what's referred to as a regulatory taking. North Dakota, the North Dakota Supreme Court has kind of taken a light touch. There's a three-prong test that was announced by the United States Supreme Court about what a regulatory taking is. It's very loose, and basically, as long as you are giving the applicant time, the landowner time, before the zoning ordinance comes into place, and you're not actively taking their business away, and you allow for existing non-conforming use, then it is not considered a taking. We had a case, I think it was out of Fargo, in which they had a, a problem was what I'm talking about, that they made that challenge, and the court said it wasn't a regulatory taking. Interestingly enough, in North Dakota, they do allow you to have a regulatory taking of certain types of adult uses, but it has to be over a five-year amortized time period. So great question. It usually doesn't result in a regulatory taking, but that area of the law sort of grows over time and changes. And, you know, in twenty years, there could be a difference of opinion among justices, the Supreme Court, and what the Constitution is interpreted to say. But right now, no, we really don't run into that issue very much. But at the same time, when you rezone an area, if you have an existing non-conforming use, that's, you basically have to allow it to continue there until it's no longer that use.
On a rational basis.
I got one final, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is, should be an easy one. What is, law then requires, say, Mike and I are sitting over at the Silver Dollar having a beer, and we start talking, ow. What is the open, is a couple of guys, we don't have quorum.
So, great, great question, and so the open meetings law is as follows, if you have a quorum of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that is a meeting. So if there's a majority of you present, that is a meeting that you have to publish eyes and keep open. If two Planning and Zoning Commission members are having a conversation, that is not a meeting. Where you can run into problems with serial meetings is if two commissioners say, this is how I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna deny the application for the sign, and then you start playing phone tag, and you call the next Planning and Zoning Commission member and say, we're gonna deny it, what are you gonna vote? And then that, and you get a serial meeting going, that is an open meetings violation. The other way that you can have an open meetings violation is through email, electronic correspondence, where somebody will, email goes out to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the packet, and somebody says, I think we should vote no on number nine, and somebody else hits reply all and says, yes, I agree with that. That's technically a violation of the open meetings law. So just avoid hitting reply all, and avoid having a quorum of this Planning and Zoning Commission in the same place. That does not apply to social activities. So if you're at the Bison football game, and you have the entire Planning and Zoning Commission there, as long as you're not talking about Planning and Zoning Commission items, it's not a meeting. And there are a couple of exceptions, most all meetings have to be public, so you have to allow the public to be present. Doesn't necessarily mean they have the right to participate, they just have the right to listen. The only time they have the right to participate is during a public hearing. And so they can sit, and they can listen, they can observe, but they can't actually address the commission until, the chair can obviously allow somebody, you know, say, yeah, you can come up and talk to, even though we don't have a public hearing. Technically, they're legally only able to address the commission during a public hearing. You can go out of the public context for a few reasons. One is if we're having an executive session to discuss a litigation matter. The other exceptions probably don't apply to planning and zoning, those are if we're negotiating on a contract or some other deal, if there's certain confidential data that you can't provide, or if you're giving direction to staff on certain items. But that's usually reserved to the governing body. The only time I could see Planning and zoning commission going into executive session would be for a litigation matter.
Yeah, I'm pretty loosey-goosey when it comes to a lot of people speaking. That's okay, right?
Yeah.
It's the shutting it off side, that makes you very procedural.
Yeah, and it might be worthwhile, as part of one of your discussions, to have some consideration about public hearing, what, you know, how much time you're gonna give applicants. Some cities are very prescriptive, they'll say, you have five minutes to respond, and they actually have a procedure written out, and they'll have a little box of lights at the desk, that one is green, amber, and red. And others just kind of allow people to speak as long as they want, and that's, it's a good discussion item to have, what you wanna have as rules for your public hearings.
Those rules we may not have developed, because certain, if the rooms fall, then it's more of an issue, a challenge to kind of keep it within reason, the back and forth. If it's a smaller issue, sometimes, who cares if somebody's speaking a little longer, or providing more color around.
So my advice always is, you create a policy that is three, four, or five minutes, and then if you wanna give somebody longer, the chair can just say, go ahead, continue on, I'll give you another five minutes, or I'll give you ten minutes to wrap it up. That way, when you have the large groups, you can say, our policy is three, four, or five minutes, and if, and that also gives the chair the ability, that if somebody's just rambling on and on and on, you can say, you know, can you wrap it up? You're supposed to have it done in five minutes, I'll give you another minute. Just set the basic rules, and the chair can always say, I'll give you additional time to speak.
Wes, Mark, are we going to have any...
No.
Well, it really hasn't that issue. I mean, when there's a big crowd, there's a lot of people to speak, and I don't wanna call them at once.
I've got experience working on a controversial project, where the person was speaking, and we told him their time was up, and somebody in the back said, they can have my three minutes, and they can have mine, too, and it was like, oh, jeez.
Again, double that sword. Thank you, there.
Thank you.
Before you go, any other questions?
I do have one. Will you be providing your PowerPoint to us?
Yeah, I can do that. And then I was thinking, in maybe three or four months, I was gonna go over the relationship of the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances, and just kind of start building from basic, and kind of working through how the ordinances work with the comprehensive plan, and then maybe getting into PUDs, talking about, talking through PUDs, and then maybe a couple, maybe one session, just specifically on conditional use permits.
All right, so next, agenda, which is discussion, the meeting time and dates of...
We're still at this time, because John, he made the meeting, right?
Right, because Monday was not an option anymore, five thirty was preferred over the seven, or something.
My pleasure.
Does anybody have an issue with continuing with the current time slot? I would say, don't change.
Motion.
Yeah, do we need to...
Sure. Will we continue to have times and dates in the future?
I'll second that, Duds.
Move the segment to continue the meetings at five thirty and the first... The second Tuesday of the month. All those who pay or say aye. Any opposed? Any votes passed? Anyone else? Any other topics?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Move the segment to adjourn, all who pay or say aye.
Aye.
I would buy you all the beer you could drink, but we'll end up with a quorum then.